Guys are so quiet. I'd like to call the orders this Monday, November 12th, 2022, regular board meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board. Role call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is President and Council.
Thank you. Mrs. Spanenberg and Mr. Kirschner, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to our presentation portion of our evening, starting with the Creekside Middle School Indiana Academic Spell Bowl Junior Division State Champions. Mr. Pelch.
Dr. Berisford, Madam President, members of the board, thank you for having me this evening and allowing me the opportunity to introduce some pretty outstanding people to you. On Saturday, November 12th, the Creekside Middle School Spell Bowl team headed to Purdue University with aspirations of bringing home a state spell bowl title. After eight grueling rounds and some tough competition, including Carmel Middle School and Clay Middle School, who also both qualified for the state tournament, the Creekside Wildcats walked away as the 2022 junior level state champions. At the competition, Creekside put on quite the performance, scoring 69 out of a possible 72 points. Additionally, Creekside had seven spellers get all nine words correct during their rounds. To say we are proud of their achievement is an understatement. Before bringing up the coach to introduce the student spellers, I'd like to brag on her for a moment. While she'd never take any credit for the success of the spell bowl team and will always give all the credit to the students, Mrs. Jennifer Carson has been an incredible coach to our student spellers. During her time as the spell bowl coach at Creekside Middle School, the team has found incredible success. Mrs. Carson has developed a program that is highly competitive, well-respected across the state, and a lot of fun. She finds fun ways to motivate students, builds confidence in students, and works diligently to ensure that all students grow as learners. Over the past five years, under Mrs. Carson's leadership, the team has been the state champions three times and the state runner-up twice. Additionally, Mrs. Carson was selected this year as a finalist for the IESP Coach of the Year, which she was recognized for at the competition. Now, to recognize and celebrate our incredible student spellers, please join me in welcoming Mrs. Carson to the podium.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to some superstar spellers. And just by way of noting, we had a very young team this year. Nearly half of our team is sixth graders. And so we had five sixth graders, three seventh graders, and three eighth graders. Pravira Damarotny is a sixth grader. Alex Gao is in seventh grade. Liam Guing is a two-year spell bowl team member and in seventh grade. Josiah Huang is a sixth grader. Mia Miller, also a sixth grader. Anara Ramen, another sixth grader. Adya Sumaranyan, an eighth grader. Rithvik Veriganda, also an eighth grader. And Sophie Wei, a sixth grader. We had two members who are sisters who were not able to be here tonight, Krisha and Vetika Vaez. Vetika is our only three-year spell bowl team member. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And I would spell that too, but I get it wrong. We have two more presentations and then we will take a short pause because we know that it's a school night in finals week, so then you guys can head home. Our next presentation is the Carmel High School Marching Band 2022 ISMA State Champions and Band of America 2022 Grand National Champions, Dr. Tim Fairs.
Thank you. Dr. Berisford, members of the board, thank you for having us. I feel like we're becoming great friends. Being new to the high school and getting to show up often is a fun thing to do for our students and staff members. We are here to recognize our band members tonight, but before we do that, Mr. Crakey, I'd like for you to come on up. Going to embarrass you a little bit and recognize you, not just embarrass. Mr. Crakey is our Performing Arts DC Associate Director of Bands and Marching Band Director at Carmel High School. He also teaches, too. Was recently inducted into the Indiana Chapter of the Phi Beta Mu International Bandmasters Fraternity. Phi Beta Mu's membership is elected from band members across the country who have established themselves as leaders in the profession. The vetting process for this membership occurs over the course of two years from the point of nomination. Chris joins, current Carmel Clay Schools Band Directors Michael Poet, inducted in 2015, Wendy Higdon, inducted in 2017, Greta Poet, inducted in 2018, and Chris Griffith, inducted in 2021, in the membership in this prestigious organization. And I just share that because we are so fortunate here in Carmel Clay Schools to have wonderful performing arts. And Mr. Crakey does a great job leading that at the big house, and we are so fortunate for the collaboration that he has with all those individuals. On behalf of the entire CHS staff and our student body, we have several special students with us tonight, we congratulate you and are so proud of your relationship, or leadership, I should say, and am thankful for everything that you do for our students and staff. Now, I'm going to let Mr. Crakey recognize our students that are with us to represent our band.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for recognizing these incredible students tonight. The 2022 edition of the Carmel High School Marching Greyhounds were successful in several record-setting ways, both CHS and nationally. November 5th, the band was named the ISMA Open Class Indiana State Champions, which was our sixth state championship for the group. In the very next weekend, the marching band represented Carmel High School at the Bands of America Grand National Championships held at Lucas Hotel Stadium here in Indianapolis. The band participated in three rounds of competition with 100 other groups representing 38 of the 50 states. Band was ranked first throughout the weekend and finished Saturday evening's finals competition by winning our sixth national championship. Carmel now has, thank you. Carmel now has the second most national championships of all time. We've won four of the last six national championships that have been held and five of the last 10 in the last 10 years, which is an absolutely unprecedented run of success for the group. This was our 26th consecutive appearance in the national finals, also the longest-standing streak. Carmel High School Marching Greyhounds also received the finals caption awards for best music performance, best visual performance, best general effect in the competition, which is the third time that all three captions awards have been swept by a single ensemble in the over 40 years the national championship has been held, and all three of those times have been by the Carmel High School Marching Band. And then we finished our season, a couple of weeks after that, within just an outstanding trip to the 96th Annual Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in front of an estimated crowd of close to 2 million people in New York City and tens of millions more on television. Band also got to tour several different things in New York City, and during our five-day trip, saw both the Radio City Holiday Show and also The Lion King on Broadway, widely successful trip on all fronts, and we have well over 1,000 students, staff, parent volunteers, and supporters in New York City representing Carmel. I'm extraordinarily proud of all of our competitive accomplishments, but even more so of what the group of students has accomplished over the course of over 650 hours of rehearsal between June and November, a incredible performance on finals night, and just an amazing year with all of these incredible students. As always, I'd like to thank everybody administratively here at ESC, the members of our school board, and all of our CHS administration for all of their support throughout this year and every year. I'd also like to publicly thank the other band directors at Carmel High School, Mike Poet, Andy Cook, Kyle Young, and Matt Black, all of whom contribute just as much to this as I do, and also all of our hundreds of parent volunteers who have worked just tirelessly alongside their students throughout the entire season and the staff that help everything, make everything possible. We have invited five of our students to come represent the other 304. We figured it'd take a little bit to introduce all of them here tonight, so we just brought five of them. We've got our five drum majors with us tonight. Guys, you can come on up. I'd like to introduce you to a senior, Riley Stolpe. Another senior, Ani Brown Harbin. Another senior, George Wong. Another senior, Landon Peterson. And our sophomore, Owen Russell. And again, thank you all very, very much for all of your support this year and every year, and hopefully we'll be back here another year doing the same thing.
Yeah, if you don't have any, that's even better.
Hi, my name is Landon Peterson. For college, I'm currently undecided, but as for major, looking into something in the technology field, maybe cybersecurity.
I'm Ani Brown Harbin. I'm also undecided on college, but the dream school is Emerson College in Boston, and I'd like to do a double major in English and Communications.
My name is Riley Stolpe. I am also undecided for college. Purdue decision doesn't come out till mid-January, so we've got some time. I'm considering major in education.
Good evening, everybody. My name is George Wong, and I'm thinking about doing a double major in mechanical engineering as well as industrial design. Thank you.
Congratulations again. And if, for the gentleman who's going to do education, we know of a really great school district that we love our teachers, so don't forget about us. Congratulations again, and thank you for putting up with our crazy request. Our next is a district update. Dr. Michael Berisford, spotlight on excellence.
Well, with mixed emotions, I get to announce tonight that this is the final board meeting for Leila Spanenberg and Michael Kirschner. Leila's completing her third term as a school board member. That's 12 years. Mike's finishing his second, eight years. And they have dutifully and wonderfully led the Carmel Clay School District, school system for those years through all kinds of different challenges and some amazing things just like tonight, some amazing accomplishments. And we're here to just celebrate them as part of our focus on excellent. So with that, I'll turn it back to President Browning because I know there's several people that want to say a few words.
Yes. So your dear colleagues would like to say a few thoughts and well wishes to you, so I'm going to start with Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Leila, I'm going to start with you. We had not known one another before, and you were so gracious with your time and your expertise and such volumes of patience. And I think over this time, certainly, we've developed a friendship, and I look to continue that. And it's been nice spending time with your family this evening, and thank you so much. And this district is so grateful for your leadership over these years. The depth of knowledge that you have is really incredible, and it's been valued and will be dearly missed. So thank you. And Mike, we have known one another for a few years, but certainly this has broadened our friendship, and I think of you and Gay as dear friends, and it's been lovely being your colleague. And you two have a eye for detail that we will miss, and so hopefully you will not forget about us and we can lean on you. But thank you both for everything you've done, and I'm grateful for this time. I wish it could have been longer.
Thank you.
What can I say about my fearless board members? Thank you for your inquiry-based mindset. It's been a pleasure to work with you all. You ask great questions and challenge us consistently to keep students at the center. Leila, I will W. Mrs. Database, and that is because whenever I have a question or just the need to know something, you have a recommendation on how I can acquire that knowledge if you don't already know it. Mike, I think I'm going to W. Mr. Thoughtful because you are always thinking of multiple perspectives. You have, I think, a unique perspective that sometimes we haven't considered, and I will miss that. I will miss both of your perspectives on the board. I'm happy for you and unhappy, so, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'll finish us off, but first I want to offer kind of down here our superintendent, Dr. Ostrom. Do you have anything?
To you both, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership. And as I shared with both of you, when educators and different people around the state and around the country look for different jobs and positions, the support that you've provided to the district, the leadership that you have provided to the district has been unparalleled and was a big reason why I chose to come to Carmel Clay Schools. So thank you.
Dr. Dudley?
Well, both Leila and Mike, thank you so much for your dedication. Leila, your 12 years of dedication, you've been on the board forever and worked on policy together. And Mike, you know, I remember my daughter used to babysit for that, and me and Jenna, and we're just so appreciative of the work that you've done and the support that you've done for our students and our staff and our families, and you're a very positive influence on all of us, and we very much appreciate that work. Thank you.
Excuse me. And I would say that, I don't think you even realize it, but how much of a mentor you are for other board members, and I'm sure they would agree with that. But I've, you know, worked with a lot of board members over the years, and I know for sure that a board develops a culture, and that can either be a positive or a negative. And both of you have really set the example in terms of being positive. Mike, you always echo the appreciation to our teachers, and that matters. As you know, we have an excellent relationship with our Teachers Association, and it really starts with board members and with both of you, very vocal about supporting our teachers and the work that they do. And so we just really appreciate you and don't forget about us. You can come back and visit every once in a while. Thank you.
Dr. B, I'll let you speak in just a minute. I'll finish us off off here. I just want to say that, okay, I'm not going to cry, but I might. You really hope in your life that you come across people that make you better, and I can honestly say that the both of you had made me a better person. You've made me a better board member, you've made me a better community member, a better mom, wife, because of the selfless time that you've given to other people. Mike, we call you a mensch, and I hope that you take that as the highest compliment because it's totally true. You have an attitude of gratitude, you always see the good things, you ask the great questions, you're always available, you're the type of person who will call after something that happens and ask if you're okay. I truly appreciate that. Leila, again, database is a great, the depth of knowledge that you have, you've always approached things with great questions, you ask the great things, you take people, and you see the good in everything, and I'm so incredibly thankful. So thank you on behalf of myself and for my family for making me a better person. We have one more thing, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. B. As much, I know how much you guys love public comment, so I'm going to have, we do have one public comment tonight that I'm going to skip ahead in the line. Will Alexander Spanenberg, please go up to the podium and say your name for the audience?
Yep, Alexander Spanenberg, 93112 books. That's probably already online somewhere. I want to start this public comment since I'm probably the only one speaking. That means I have half an hour, right? But, yes, good. I just want to give a lot of gratitude and thanks to my mother, Leila, for all that she's done for our school board, for our school district in the 12 and a half years that you've been on the board. You know, it's a lot to think about how you look at someone's legacy. And when I look at your legacy on the school board, you know, one of the things that you championed in your last election was making sure that there was an SRO in each of our buildings, and that's something that you helped get accomplished in our district to ensure that all students had that resource. Additionally, along with the time that you've had on this board, I can say that it means a lot to me as your son that you spent all of this time to ensure that my education was the best that it could be for me and that I could have the best experience in life that I could have. And I'll be reminded of that every day because your name is on my high school diploma. There've been trying times, there have been glorious times, but I just want to say thank you so much for all of your dedication and all that you've done for me and my brothers and for every student in Carmel Clay Schools throughout your tenure. Thank you.
And I will pass down to Mom his request for a public comment tonight. Dr. B.
I'm a mess now. You can't follow that, but I will. Mike, Leila, first off, my very first introduction to Carmel Clay Schools was when Mike Kirschner called me on the phone and said, hey, I've heard some good things about you. I'd want to encourage you to apply for the superintendent of Carmel Clay Schools. And I thought he was doing it just because he was being like polite to somebody who said, probably ought to call this guy. But one thing led to another, and here I am. And that's when I, in the interview process, where I met Leila and the rest of the board at that time. And I can tell you that when I walked out of the first interview, I was so impressed by really the maturity of the board, but also, you know, what do you do when you're looking at a job? You go creep the website, and on the website, there's this thing called Guiding Principles. And there are nine guiding principles that are actually on the wall. And when I, after I read that and after I met you two and the rest of the board, I knew that you were a principled group that really took your guiding principles serious. You not only read them and post them on the wall, but you live them. And the number one box on the guiding principles is that students are in the center of every decision. And I can guarantee you, over the last five years that I've been with this board, is that that is truly your guiding light, and that's been the focal point of your leadership here. And you've challenged us, you have supported us, you have questioned us and questioned us and questioned us, and you have made our administrative team sharper, better, and kind of as Katie said, you've set a really good example for us in leadership. And that's something I will be forever grateful for. And to single you out a little bit, Michael, you are the most positive force I've ever been around. When you had your service as president, you started every board meeting with things that you were grateful for and showing gratitude to different groups of the team. And I don't know if you know how positive that impact was, because some of those times when you delivered those messages, it was pretty tough out there. And every time you singled out a group that you were thankful for, that group always responded with, we really appreciate that. with, we really appreciate that a school board member would do that. And you continued that trend after you left the presidency by always finishing our board members, our board meetings, by pointing out some positives. And that undying positive spirit will be what I always remember about you. And Leila, first off, anybody that devotes 12 years of their lives to public schools, to me, is a pretty heroic person. But the very first thing I noticed about you was that you were very organized. And you had a running list, and you kept track and kept accountable of everything that was going on in the district at a level that was higher than any other board member I've ever met. And you did that because you wanted to make sure that everything that involved a kid was done at a high level. And that really challenged us and pushed us to a very, a higher level, I believe. And then finally, for both of you, I know with, I know that everybody loves their kids the most, but when you're at a school board leadership position, you have to love everybody's kid the most. And you did that, and you've done that throughout your leadership, and I appreciate that. So, I'm gonna stop because I'm about unable to speak anymore. But we do have a few tokens of our appreciation for you, and I wanted to kind of share. And what we have here is a wooden box. And if you can see the top of it, it's engraved with that little logo up there. And what they read is an appreciation for your direction and guidance, Carmel Clay Schools, and then the years of your service. And if you open it up, you'll see a lot of packing. There's a compass. And I want to thank you for being our true north and for giving us direction, and always thank you. So, if you want to meet me up here, we will bestow upon you some gifts, and we'll go from there. Now, in addition to your compasses, you're also getting a lifetime pass to go to all athletic and all the events that we have at Carmel Clay Schools.
Like Holiday Spec?
Like Holiday Spec. It's the gold card.
I know.
There's that. And if you guys would, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, we would. If that's okay.
It has been my honor and privilege to represent our community on the Carmel Clay School Board for the last eight years. It's not a secret that our staff, families, and community are what make Carmel Clay Schools great. Our schools attract families and businesses to our city. Every school board faces its own challenge, and in no order, here are three of the biggest accomplishments or challenges we faced. One was the creation of our guiding principles, which are on the wall, which somebody already stole the thunder from me, but I'll only say, all 10 of them, all nine of them are equally important, but we specifically started with, one, students are at the center of every decision. And then we went down to nine, that says, parent and community involvement enhances student learning. And if you want to know what two, three, four, five, six, and seven, eight are, read them on your way out the door. Actually, I, see, I was wrong. Ten is fiscal responsibility is fundamental to achieving our vision. Second, already stolen from other speakers, was passing of the school safety referendum. CCS was the first to pass such a referendum, which allowed us to have school resource officers in every building. And I'd like to add that we've been blessed with the best. Third was chairing the search committee for Dr. Bearsford. He often states that he is the luckiest man alive, but we as a board know that the students, families, and taxpayers of Carmel are very lucky to have him. He is a kind, compassionate leader that listens and makes difficult decisions when necessary. I would also like to thank all of the administrators, professional staff, students, parents, or guardians for all they do for Carmel Schools to make it so great. Many thanks to my fellow board members, and I recognize the bond that we will share forever. I cannot say enough about working with Colleen on a regular basis, as she is the glue that holds everything together and makes it look easy. We at Carmel Clay Schools are blessed with a truly awesome administrative team, and it is their work and their effort, from Dr. Bearsford to the bus driver to the lunch lady that makes Carmel Clay Schools. One of my favorite sayings is about the bus driver is, he's the fir, he or she is the first person that can make or break the student's day. Positive, good morning, Joe, how are you doing today? Goes a long way towards that student's day being us. And I would be remiss if I did not thank my beautiful bride and my two great children, Adam and Jenna, for understanding the importance of making the world a better place and affording me the time to do this job. Thank you.
I would like to begin with a few words for Mike, because I didn't have that opportunity earlier. Mike?
Let me begin with a huge thank you for all you do. I echo what everybody has shared about you. And I also want to share that I need to thank you for leading with integrity, for putting students first, for practicing fiscal responsibility and acknowledging where we've saved money at every board meeting, for actively listening, and, most importantly, advocating for public education in all of the students here in Carmel Clay Schools and across the state of Indiana. While serving on the school board, our district has accomplished many great things, many which you've shared, but none of which would have been possible without your steadfast leadership and your contributions, your perspectives, your ideas. They enhance our conversations, and they've challenged each of us to be better leaders in our community. You've given selfless, dedicated service to our schools, and I feel blessed to have the opportunity to serve alongside you for all these years. So, thank you for all you've done, and you will continue to do for our community. And I wrote-
Hey, while we're sneaking in there, we need a historian to figure out what the record is for your serving as president, because I'm sure this lady's number one.
Thank you. And I have a lot of thank yous to share. I appreciate you bearing with me. I've got two pages of things I'd like to share with all of you, and I will do so, since this is my last opportunity. I do want to thank you for joining us this evening, and I'd like to share my immense feelings of gratitude. I am overwhelmed by the outpouring of kindness and love by not only my family and friends, but also our community and the fellow colleagues and professional educators that we have in our school district. I will, and now and forever, be thankful for this opportunity to serve our community. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the board, from celebrating the accomplishments of our students and educators that you saw here this evening, to building long-lasting friendships, to working through those difficult situations to ensure that our great school system meets the needs of each of our community members. I'm honored to share this evening with some very, very important people in my life, my treasured family, and some very dear friends who've joined me as well. They were here at my very first board meeting, they were campaigning for me in their little t-shirts, and they are here celebrating our journey on this board. And I say "our" journey because I could not have served these last 12 and a half years without you. Over these years, you've been patient, very, very, very flexible with my schedule, and a sounding board once or twice. I'm honored to introduce my very best friend, my husband, and my loudest cheerleader, Bill Spanenberg. Bill, please stand up. And my three loving sons, Alexander, who I surprisingly heard from earlier, thank you sweetheart, and Benjamin and William. Go ahead, stand up, boys. Oh, I heard you, Andrew. Andrew Trobridge, my nephew, and my sister Latifi so kindly joined us this evening. They drove across the river, Dr. B, to be here with us tonight. And I would like to also introduce a few of my very dear friends who are part of my tribe, Paula, Felina, and Maria. Thank you for being here with us. I am very blessed they're part of my family, and equally blessed that they choose to stick around and stay with me and call me their mom. I love you all forever. Now, my sweet boys are the answer to my why, why did I run for school board? And because of my children, I never doubted any time that I spent on my commitment to education. And the thousands of children, just as special, you here tonight, just as talented as my children, just as loved by all of your families, this is the reason I continued to serve those 12 years. You are all incredibly important to me, and you will continue to be important to me as I move to do other things in my life. It's very bittersweet to walk away knowing that doing school boarding is what I really, really love, and I cherished every moment that I was able to work with my fellow board members, work with our professional educators, families and friends, and our Carmel community to help support our public education. I've said time and time again, the three Rs of leadership are not reduce, reuse, recycle, or, you know, arithmetic and whatever else they call those three Rs, but it's really relationship, relationship, relationship. To me, that is the key to any leadership role. What I value most about my board experience is the relationships I've built through the years. These relationships with students, with educators, with board members, with our Carmel citizens who had children who knew me, I mean, I just have so many new relationships that I've built through my board work. And this has created lasting friendships, and I will continue to treasure those. Katie, Louise, Jennifer, and Mike, it has been an honor and privilege to work with you supporting our CCS guiding principles. Those are near and dear to my heart, little plug, developed in 2015 by over 3,000 of our Carmel community members who provided feedback to the board so we could bring together guiding principles to lead us from 2015 and beyond. And they are doing an amazing job in helping be our compass on how to lead. One big thing I'd like to point out is I am confident that the current board and future board members, your perspectives, your skills, and your experiences will continue to make CCS thrive. Being a board member is recognizing a team approach, and I'm thankful for the positive direction my predecessors set for CCS, and I appreciate the mentorship of those who led before me and to those who currently lead alongside with me. I'd like to recognize Bruce Calabrese, Greg Phillips, Andy Klein, Tricia Hackett, Pam Nalls, Kathy Freed, and the late Stephen Backer and Jeff Carter. I'd like to thank them for their support, their guidance, and their friendship. I'd also like to recognize the steadfast leadership of our CCS administration and my favorite administrative assistant, Colleen Novas. Dr. Bearsford and his team, including Roger McMichael, Dr. Dudley, Dr. Ostrom, Kristy Cloud, and David Boardward, continue to fine-tune the best practices to ensure student growth. You and your teams do an amazing job in pursuit of excellence. It has been a gift to serve alongside you. And the glue that holds us all together, as been stated earlier, and makes every day a joy, I'd like to thank Colleen and Emily, my recorder right there. Thank you for your patience, your love, your pictures, and your gentle reminders. You have been fundamental to our success, and we thank you for your service to our community. Our CCS educators, our SROs, and staff are second to none. They served my children extremely well, and I am confident they will continue to strive to provide students a safe learning environment for academic, social, emotional, and physical success. Thank you for your service each and every day. As an advocate for public education, I couldn't be more proud to call Carmel Clay Schools my home. What we have in Carmel is so very special and unique. I am forever blessed, blessed by my board experience of serving students and families in our Carmel community. Thank you for entrusting me with this incredible responsibility. I appreciate each of you and the gift of serving. Thank you so very much.
We will now take a short pause in our meeting for pictures. Thank you so much of those who were able to join. We are highly invited to stay after, but we do know it's bedtime in finals week. Thank you so much in the audience for being patient with us as we send a fond farewell to our fellow board members that are gonna go off and celebrate tonight. So, we are going to continue our meeting. We did have one public comment, but we kind of already did that one, so we will now move on to the consent portion of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent? Second? Discussion? All those in favor approving consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now move on to a public hearing of an additional appropriation for $1,450 million for the safety referendum fund.
million for the safety referendum fund. At this time, I do need a motion to suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing. Mr. McMichael, do you have any comments?
Just that this appropriation is necessary for good reason, and that is that we actually got our SROs in place a little earlier than what we had originally planned for. And so we have the cash, but we need appropriation which gives us the authority to actually spend it. So this has no impact on taxes or anything like that. It's just authority to use the money that we already have.
Thank you. So I know, take a motion. I need a motion to suspend the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All right, meeting suspended. At this time, we'll now offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. There are no comments from members of the public. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. We will now move on to action items. Action? I did. You did. Thank you for keeping me in line. We will now move on to action items. Action item 6.1, approve the resolution for additional appropriation. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is the action item necessary to move this forward to finally get approved by the state.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for additional appropriation? Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll now move on to 6.2, bid award for the Carmel Life and Learning Center Interior Finishes Remodel 2023. Mr. McMichael.
Yes, this is a recommendation for a bid award to JBM Contractors in the amount of $294,200. This is a project in our CCLC building. It's replacing finishes in the majority of that building.
Thank you.
Doing some minor modifications to the building.
Do I have a motion to approve the bid award? Second? Discussion? I will make note that we had six bids that were solicited, four contractors did pick up, and we had two contractors that submitted that bid. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the bid award, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll now move on to adoption of bylaws in section 0.140, section 0150, section 0160, and 0170. Do I have a motion to take these together? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I'll turn it over to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you bylaws in section 0140, 0150, 0160, and 0170. These are all our policy committee met, and we reviewed these bylaws. There's not substantial changes. There are just some editing changes to get the terms to be more alike, and so we bring these as a group for the bylaws. And I just want to thank our policy committee, Jennifer and Mike, for really taking the time to look at all of the bylaws. We appreciate that.
Thank you. And I will also just make note that whenever possible, we do not take action the first time, so this is actually the second time that this has come before the board. Do I have a motion to approve bylaws, action item 6.3 to 6.6? Do I have a motion to approve? A second? Discussion? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I know, Dr. Dudley, thank you for your expertise and help on this. I know we worked diligently, and I have been left with one last correction that Mike saw and would like to bring to our attention in... Sorry, I didn't bring my glasses. For some reason, I'm failing with my contact in. 140, which is the membership, and it's in the bylaws, 142. And there's some place in the second or third sentence that says CCS, and we crossed out corporation, but he thinks we should add district. So I'll leave this for you to look at. Okay, thank you.
So just more of making sure the names expanded. Any other questions or discussion items?
As I say, you can approve it with the correction
Okay.
that you've given, so you can still approve it if you'd like.
All those in favor of adopting bylaws 0.140, 0150, 0160, and 0170, signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries. And I think that puts us, Dr. Dudley, we have successfully reviewed all of our policies and all of our bylaws, so we now may get to start over all again.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And we do have some policies to review starting in January.
Yeah, the work is never done, but I think it's so impressive that our policy and our board committee over the past few years, which is, I hear from other boards, not something very normal. So we're very proud that we review all of our policies very frequently. Fantastic. We will now move on to the discussion portion of our evening, which I'm very excited about. Mr. McMichael. No, that's fine. And as he's pulling that up, I will say that this discussion is on the proposed facility projects for 2023, so lots of exciting things coming to Carmel Clay Schools. Got it?
Thank you. The format is I will go through the projects and make some comments on several of them, and then we will have, Dr. Ferris will provide some information and rationale for the, primarily the Polytech project at the high school, and then Mr. Bill Payne with Fanning and Howie will provide some drawings to give you an idea of where that area is located, and then I will elaborate more on the Orchard Park project. So that'll be the format. So I can start with Carmel High School. As I said, we're proposing a Polytech addition. We also are doing what we refer to as the mid-cycle renovations at the Freshman Center, and that will involve changing all the finishes, as you know, and wall finishes as well as flooring and so forth. Then we have a project at the high school for culinary arts kitchen. The program currently being taught is for... It needs a commercial kitchen. What they're using is a Family Consumer Science kitchen, which was developed in the 90s for, which is like residential equipment and so forth. And then radio, TV renovations. Most of the cost of this project is for the outdated equipment, as you can imagine, a lot of technology and so forth that's been there for a number of years. There's some minor architectural modifications, but it's primarily equipment. Then at Creekside, we're recommending some outside mid-cycle work involving paving repairs and concrete and signage and changing parking lot lights to LED, and then some landscaping. Likewise, at West Clay, it's a complete mid-cycle project, which is, again, is outlined in the report. The playground at that school needs major work. The equipment is no longer available, so it'll be a complete redo of the playground, including the surface material. Then at Collegewood Prairie Trace Town Meadow and Forestale, that again is some outside mid-cycle work with paving and lighting and landscaping. And then the technology, or the, I'm sorry, the Orchard Park project, which I will speak to after Dr. Ferris provides some information and rationale for the Polytech project. So with that, Dr. Ferris?
All right. First, I want to start off and just, I'm going to give everyone just kind of a glimpse, just a quick minute thirty, and I'm assuming Emily's kind of worked to kind of put this together. Amanda Hoagland worked together to put this video together, but it just gives everyone kind of an idea of what our students are currently doing within our Polytechnic classrooms. And this does not encompass every classroom, but it just gives you a quick snapshot of what it looks like at Carmel High School on a daily basis in these areas.
Art, business, communications, engineering and technology, and family consumer science is now Polytechnic. Students may take courses as individual exploratory electives or in sequence to fulfill the requirements of the more than 20 Indiana graduation pathways Carmel High School offers. Polytechnic prepares students for what's next. There are dual-credit course options and industry-based certifications to prepare students for future college or careers. We are Polytechnic.
So first, I just wanted to share, you know, that just gives you a little bit of an idea of what goes on at Carmel High School every day in many of our Polytechnic. And being in this community for over 20 years, we talk about our size many different times. And when a lot of these rooms or programs were kind of constructed, it was built and created for 3,000, 3,200 kids, and, you know, we sit over 5,200 students right now. And it's a beautiful thing every day to be able to witness our kids move from point A to point B and the opportunities that students have. And so really, as you're going to see in these few slides, the big, big challenge that we're looking at is Mr. McMichael already kind of referenced, or really two areas. And I know he mentioned our Greyhound Media Network. I want to highlight culinary and our innovative technology and engineering for automotive and construction. You probably saw a wonderful video at the last spring of the tiny home that was constructed by our students, and they're already well on their way to another tiny home this year. And the challenges in these two areas, last year, we cut 199 students from the culinary program. So kids that requested those courses, they were not able to take that course. And then in the same thing for our automotive and construction area, we cut 106 students from that program. And so we feel by adding some of those areas, or when I say areas, just expanding some of that, updating it, we feel that we will be able to meet the requests as they come in, as our students start to do. And the thing you're going to see on this next slide is you can see the numbers over the last several years. And in those numbers, you can see that these areas are just continuing to grow. And the thing is, sometimes we think about that students that are selecting these courses, they may not go into the industry specifically for what they're doing, but they're getting some prerequisite skills to be able to be successful for a degree that they're going to a four-year college for. And so we feel it meets the needs of a lot of our students, and it's an opportunity. Today, I actually had chicken salad sandwich from our culinary students, and it was phenomenal as I met with Ball State Associate Dean on some different topics. And so it's just amazing to see each and every day what our students do in these areas, and we feel that we can better provide for them by giving them a little more space and updated equipment to be able to meet the needs and the demands that are in 2023, so to speak. This just, I know, I think Bill and Bart may cover this, this just shows the area that where the automotive, where the tiny home sits right now, over by our freshman center parking lot, and they'll get a little more into that about the area that it would be for this specific program. Just any questions?
Yes. You guys want to start, and then I'll finish?
Yeah, I'm excited about us being able to expand so we can accommodate the students that have interest in that area, because it saddens me that we would have to turn these students away that have interest. I didn't understand what the asterisks.
So the asterisks pointed out the numbers I gave you. I should have mentioned that. So those were the areas that we cut 199 students and 106. And so that just pointed out that that was the area that we cut those numbers, or had to because of physical space.
Can we go back to that slide? I'm interested in seeing which area is the fastest growing. Yeah, that's okay. It's just really, I want to know which area is the fastest growing in terms of interest for the students. Do you remember?
By far, right now, I would say that it's the culinary is the area that they're... Now, I don't have the specific numbers. I will say that.
That's okay.
But there's no doubt culinary has a great interest. However, I will tell you with the tiny house, I feel like there are a lot of kids that want to get in. Just this year, I was standing on the side of a football game. Student came back. He was one of the two students that were, he's at Hanover, and he was featured in the video. And he, like, I was like, what are you going into? It had nothing to do with architecture or anything like that, but what he spoke about was having to work with a group of people, having to lead his little group to be able to do and to be able... And I think that's the thing that a lot of these areas that allow kids a lot of skills that they need in many jobs to be successful. Not so much about, you know, cutting a piece of wood or making sure something's level, which is, you know, a great everyday skill to have as well, too. But there's a lot of soft skills that come out of this that will allow all kids to be successful.
You make a great point. And it also gives our students a competitive edge, because a lot of students are getting jobs in high school, right?
Yes.
Them having the skills to be competitive in the working environment, I think is excellent. And then I think it might be Dr. Dudley. I was interested in knowing how this could potentially overlap with the direction we're going with our relationship with JEL or the Hamilton County kind of like organization we're transitioning with or to.
So are...
Are any of these areas overlapping with what we do, the programming that we were doing with JEL that maybe we're now transitioning to be exclusively Carmel, or are those separate
So those are separate ones, yes.
Okay.
These are all, this is all current programming that we have at the high school for our CTE programming. And then the Pursuit Institute, our partnership with them, that'll enhance our programming, but it's, there's no overlap right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I could add that this is where the kids get their, like, level-one training, and it can go up higher than that on our campus, correct? And then a lot of the work that's being done with through the Pursuit Institute is maybe if a senior wanted to do a capstone project where they might actually go work for a company and be a welder, or they could actually go into a restaurant, those types of things would be a connecting point for that. But like, they have to have a baseline before they can get to that capstone. Is that accurate, Dr. Dudley?
Yes, somewhat. Yes, and so will...
So nice.
I think it's somewhat.
Yes, with the welding example, absolutely, yes. And I think some of our, the capstones, too, with our new work-based learning specialists that we have now on site at the high school, will also work with, and work hand-in-hand with Pursuit Institute to find those partnerships where those students will have those opportunities to have those capstone opportunities. So, yes.
Dr. Ferris, I want to thank you for bringing up a good point when you highlight that that student was not necessarily following on that pathway, but had accumulated skills, which highlights the importance of the social-emotional learning skills that one had developed. which highlights the importance of the social-emotional learning skills that one develops, which are not necessarily a class, but collaborative and collaborative communication and critical thinking skills that can be learned through a variety of programming and that are so important for our students to be ready for the workforce. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of things. I had to start writing things down. First of all, I wanted to start clapping when your video was over, but no one else did, so I didn't. If there are very few things that would make me want to go back to high school, but this is one of them. This is very, very exciting for me. I love the fact that our kids have so many options. I currently have a freshman who has her entire high school on her own pathway led out so that she can be an EMT, so that her senior year, when she, because she's, she can graduate with, to be an EMT certified. And I love that our kids have the opportunities that they do. I know a lot of times people say, well, Carmel High School's so big, Carmel High School's so big. I would, it's, in some ways, it is big, number-wise, but there's only 25 kids in a class, same as you'd have anywhere. And the coursework and the course catalog that they have is like a junior college. They have so many different things that they can do. And I would much rather my kids experience that while living in my house than if I drop them off at Purdue or IU and say, see you later. Another thing is I am in line for some swag. I want some Carmel High School Polytechnic. So whenever you guys start working on that, Emily, I am first in line for, to rev that thing. I think this is extremely exciting. There are so many careers that are demanding, construction, automotive, welding. Those are the things that our society is really looking for. If you try to hire any one of those people, you will be in a long wait list. So the fact that we are giving our students so many opportunities in addition to, you know, maybe a four-year college plan, I think that's fantastic. So cannot say enough accolades. Thank you so very much for presenting to us tonight, and I can't wait to see what's next.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll ask Bill Payne to quickly present a drawing, which will give you a little more of an orientation where these spaces are at, and a little bit about the space we're at. Chairman Browning, board members, Dr. Barrisford, I heard the key term, Mr. McMichael, quickly.
Quickly.
So I will do so. So this is a plan. Let me orient you. This is the western portion of Carmel High School. If you could see it on this plan, Main Street would be running east-west, just below to the south. Another way to organize or get a reference point is the main cafeteria there to the left-hand side of the plan. So there are four areas here that Dr. Ferris had just referenced. I'll go in order. At number one, engineering and construction labs. That's the yellow area, which would be new construction on the north side of the current building. This will be high base space. So whether you're building a tiny home or bringing in large vehicles, this will have a larger clear height to allow those types of large activities to take place. Number two is a culinary arts area, which is a renovation of two current classroom spaces. It's a large area to accommodate the commercial types of equipment that Mr. Michael referenced. And number three is the radio-TV department. The last major renovation of that space was in 2007. Everything was analog. Guess what? It's all digital now. So equipment is starting to see its useful end of life, and they're moving towards digital. We did a major study. Now we're prepared to replace most of that equipment as part of that project. And then a minor area, custodial workspace to support both the new as well as existing spaces, some reorganization, expansion of their area within existing space to make that more functional.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll give you some information about the Orchard Park project. I'm pretty excited about this project, actually. But first, I want to give you some background information about EduCare. We opened our EduCare program in August of 1999, so 23 years ago. And when we did that, a little area reporter did an article, and that person only found one other school district that had employee childcare. They have lots of school districts will have vocational childcare as a part of an instructional program for students. But what made this unique at the time was that it was, it was a benefit for employees, and that was the focus. That, and, and we took children at, beginning at six weeks old, which we still do. So now there are more programs, I don't know if they're like this one, but, but there are other districts that do provide childcare for their employees. So our current capacity, we have two locations, one at Clay and one at Carmel. We started in a portable building at Clay, and we had what was called an annex building. It had been built as two kindergarten classrooms at Orchard Park, actually. And it was vacant in 1999, so we did some work on that and created the second location. And so we operated in those two facilities until we did major renovations at Clay and Carmel in the early 90s. And then we built, purpose-built space for this program. We currently have capacity of about 221 children. We have about 200 now. We would, we almost always are completely full, but we're actually short of staff right now, so this is not, we can't have more children until we can identify, you know, another employee or two. But we have a waiting list of 130 children. Now, that's a little bit deceiving to the extent that we have some children on the waiting list for January because that's a time where there, sometimes there's some changes and openings and so forth. And then a significant number are in next August. In some cases, the kids aren't born yet. So, or even because, you know, they're, they're hoping, because they, they will reserve a spot because they know how difficult it can be to get in. And we've, we've been this way for quite some time now, and we've talked about a third site for a number of years. I, early, I thought when, when the, our enrollment slowed down and we weren't growing, that was concerned about adding space. And then when we, our enrollment leveled out, that that might also impact this program. But so far, that's not happened. So, so now with regard to Orchard Park, in 2006, an addition was built onto that building for preschool special needs program. And so it is absolutely an ideal spot for an EduCare program, in terms of a facility. It has, it has a playground that was built for preschool children. It has outdoor access, which is required for, for this age group in each classroom. It has restroom facilities in, in the rooms. So we're really excited about the possibility of utilizing that area for a third EduCare program. It also has its own access, so there's a drive that comes off 106th Street and goes back to that area of the building. So we really think it has great potential, and it, and it doesn't need a lot of work. The building, it would be due for that mid-cycle change in finishes if we were still using the building as a, as a K-5 building anyhow. So, so we'll do some finish work on it and so forth. And then the, the rest of the building, we would demolish and then build an addition, which Bill will show you here in a minute, where it's, where, how it would be located. But this addition would provide for some of our maintenance operations as well as general storage for the school district. You can imagine now, for example, we're storing significant amounts of, of items as we do the performing arts project and at the high school with all, as you know, with all the costuming and, and props that they have. So that, that building has been very beneficial for that at the moment. But our maintenance department now is, and we've done some restructuring where we have like an east-side team and a west-side team and a central team. And so right now, all of our maintenance facilities are here, which of course is on the far east side of the school district. So, so we would really benefit from having some facilities there and support facilities for our maintenance team. And so, Bill, if you would show the slides on this building, then.
So this is a site plan with an overlay. What you're seeing is Orchard Park North Drive is the drive to the north of the rendered area. And then, of course, Orchard Park South Drive is to the south. As Mr. McMichael said, we would retain the 2006 addition, which would be repurposed for the EduCare programming. That's item number one in blue. It's served by its own drive access, element two, which is the brown area, which comes, which comes off of Orchard Park North Drive. The playgrounds that Mr. McMichael referenced, item number three, are present there and were designed for young children of this age group. Then in the future, item number four would be the storage facility that would be constructed. It's gray and just below the drive, but it would, it would have its own drive from Orchard Park South Drive. And in fact, that's an existing drive for the most part. We would retain that and provide some limited parking as necessary for that maintenance storage facility. The balance of the area would be returned to grassy lawn area, which I'm sure would be very attractive to the neighborhood.
Thank you. I should point out that when we talk about a maintenance facility, this is not a metal building that would look like a warehouse facility. We're quite aware that, you know, it's in a neighborhood and, and so it would be consistent with the, the existing space that we're talking about for EduCare. It would, it would, it would be an attractive facility and again, sensitive to the area that it's located in. And so I should add that, that we would be able to accommodate an additional 86 children with this facility, which is about a 39% increase in capacity. Would take us just over 300 children, and we think we could make very good use of that. And the last slide I wanted to show you was how we would propose to pay for this. And, and so all of these projects are currently estimated at about $34 million. And, but as you know, we have not, we've managed to maintain our facilities and even build additional facilities without increasing the tax rate. And we, we anticipate continuing to do that. And you can see from this slide that we're running it at 30 cents, right at 30 cents for our debt service tax rate. And by, actually by 2029, we're projecting that the rate would actually drop about 3 cents. And then you can see it continues to drop. Now, I would tell you, this is run out to 2041, and, and this isn't to suggest that in 2041 that the tax rate will be at 9 cents. But you can also see that on the top part of this, the slide, we, we not only have this project, but we always anticipate future projects. And so, because sometimes information comes that, well, this is what this is, and it doesn't raise the tax rate. But, but the question is, is what about next year and the year after that? So, so we always stay ahead, and, and we're, we're currently projecting out through the mid-20, being seen here from 2035. And again, these numbers will change. There'll be inflation, and although there's inflation built into some of these numbers, but, but unforeseen things will happen, and no doubt. But we really have quite the room in terms of the tax rate to, to cover the things that we haven't anticipated and still have room for anything that might come up that, that we didn't anticipate. So, so we're fortunate in, in this community that we're able to maintain our facilities at the level that we do, which of course, they're there to support the educational program. They're not there just to look nice and, and, but they are, facilities are an integral part of, of supporting the educational program, as you heard the comments on, on the commercial kitchen, for example. And so with that, I'll respond to questions that you might have, and, and we'll come back a month from now and ask your consideration for taking action with regard to these.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and get us started. First is just kind of a thank you to Roger, you and your team, and, you know, those who have gotten to the point where we are, we can do things for our school buildings and not increase our taxes, which is exactly what we want to do. One of the things that you highlighted that I want to highlight again is that midterm cycle. So many times, and when I go to school board conferences and things, you know, I meet with different people, they're, you know, so impressed with how that is something that's not very common. A lot of school districts will wait until a building is in disrepair and then spend twice or three times as much to fix it. I think it's very important to highlight how we take things halfway through in order to update it so that we can take better possession of the things that are under our care from our community. I do want to mention the fact that I'm so incredibly thankful and that we do have EduCare, to have an employee-based childcare is one of the things that I know, and Dr. O, you can speak on it, of our employers are, you know, asking for. I believe that you've told me that teachers and staff have taken jobs here that paid more because of the available childcare, that's high-quality childcare. You want to comment on that?
Yeah, paid less. That would, they would take less money to come here because of the childcare.
That's it.
But I, if I may, I do want to add a few stories to what Mr. McMichael has shared because from a recruiting and from a retaining standpoint of our great staff, EduCare plays a very important role. And unfortunately, recently, we've had to turn, turn employees away, candidates away because they've had the need for our EduCare program, and the waitlist is so long that unfortunately, they didn't accept the job because they didn't have the childcare that they needed. And so one example was, you've heard me many times talk about our special needs instructional assistance. We had a great candidate lined up, ready to go, looked into EduCare, and the waiting list was way too long, and so unfortunately, we did not get that candidate. Same thing recently happened with one of our administrative assistants that we were going to hire, and that unfortunately, we couldn't make that work because of childcare. On the teacher front, oftentimes, our teachers would come back earlier if they had the spot at EduCare. And they tell me this. I've heard that many times. And conversely, we've had teachers who've just decided to stay home and unfortunately resign their positions to take care of their kids because they don't have affordable childcare. And the nice thing about our EduCare program is it is affordable to our teachers and to our staff members. So this is a program that desperately needs expanding. We certainly would have a huge hiring blitz that we would prepare for, and we would research and take a look at because it is tough out there. And I've, I presented that to you in the past, tonight during my report. I'm going to tell you about two opportunities we have coming along that are new. However, this is a program that is going to keep our teachers and our staff here at Carmel Clay Schools for a long time, and also it's going to help us attract the great candidates that are interested in coming to Carmel.
Prior to being on the board, I had the privilege of being a substitute teacher, and I once signed up for EduCare. I was exhausted at the end of the day, but it was so amazing to me because, you know, as a working parent, you really want to make sure that your children are not only safe, but that they're also learning. And the curriculum and the things that they're doing with these kids is amazing, all the way from six weeks up, and the attention and love that they share. So it's such a wonderful program and such an asset. Did one more comment, and then I'm going to bring it up. I don't know if you can show the slide again for the renderings of the Orchard Park building? I just want to make sure, clarify for those who are watching, too. I remember, Dr. B, when we walked through that building, we were trying to make the decision whether to close it or not. So much, the stuff that's covered in green was, I mean, it's inhabitable. It was not fit for children to be in. And so I just want to make sure it's very clear is that the part that, the best part of the building that's current is the newer part that was built in 2006. So that would be the part that would be, just to clarify, that would be kept.
Yes.
And updated a bit to make sure that it kind of, like we were talking, that midterm cycle. But the part that was unfit at the time for other students, that's, that would be, was what's demolished, correct? The main school building?
That's correct. And, and this, by the way, is on a 12-acre site, so majority of it will, will be open grasp and be a very nice asset, we believe, for that local community.
100%. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Roger, to you and your team for your innovative thinking and for a very sustainable and important use for this site. Is there going to be any outreach activities for the Orchard Park community that may not be aware of something like this, may feel that in some ways, the CCS has abandoned them? And maybe to repair some of those relationships and let them know what a beautiful and useful facility this grounds will be for them as well?
Yes, we absolutely will be doing that. We, we would refer to that as a neighborhood meeting. We, we would refer to that as a neighborhood meeting. And when we have a little bit more information and design and so forth, then we, we may do it even before that because, you know, rumors start spreading. And that's why I want to make the point that we're not talking about building a metal warehouse building or something and things like that. But we really, I feel, made a commitment to that, that community that we would, because there were all kinds of, you know, rumors about, you know, it's going to be high-rise buildings or something. And, and we really made a commitment, I feel, that to maintain the site as a community asset as it has been for so long. So we'll definitely share that with the community.
So I've noticed also a trend is that the playground areas are blocked off as safety precautions. Will this, will there be an area where the Orchard Park community could come and utilize some playground facilities?
Well, we, we will keep the preschool playground. We don't anticipate keeping the others because of, because of its condition. And it would take, you know, we could easily spend a million dollars on, on the playground. But we will, and they'll have, they could, they would have access as they do at our other locations with, with the play facilities as well as just the grounds itself.
Thank you.
I can share that pre-COVID, we had a committee with folks from the Orchard Park committee, our community, and we also had community meetings with some of the Orchard there at, you know, in the neighborhood. And this plan's consistent with what their favorites were, which as you alluded to, Roger, they were concerned about what would, you know, what kind of thing, what it would look like there and the green space that they enjoy there. And so this, this plan's very consistent with what at that time we had discussed.
Thank you. This is only the first of many conversations we'll be having about this. Thank you so much, Roger, and for you guys coming tonight to explain some of the next steps. We will now move on to our reports for the evening. Staff and Student Services, Dr. O, strike.
Thank you very much. This evening, I'm going to share with you two new opportunities that we have to recruit both classified staff members and certified staff members, including teachers and administrators. And if you see at the bottom, I put down there, apply today. So if you're watching this out there, watching this on YouTube, we would love your application. So the first piece is we are going to do our first CCS Support Staff Job Fair mid-year. So we were very successful in July when we first held this. We had a little over eighty attendees, eighty candidates. They could apply right there on the spot. And we were able to hire numerous new employees from this job fair. So our principals shared with us that they would love to do this again in January. And so we are going to do it again. It's going to be on January fourth from three-thirty PM to six-thirty PM at Clay Middle School. We were at Clay Middle School back in July and the layout works very nice for candidates to come in. We have all of our different classified administrators and we have teachers that help us out from schools. We have our assistant principals, our principals there. But we're going to be looking for custodians, bus drivers and aides, IAs, instructional assistants, our EduCare childcare workers, also our food and nutrition services, while they're doing very well. We could always use more staff members in our food and nutrition services. Substitute teachers, big push for substitute teachers again because the substitute teacher pool, as I've shared with you before, is very cyclical. What happens is when we have maternity leaves and medical leaves, then a lot of our substitute teachers have teaching licenses, which we're very lucky. They go into those leave positions, they go into those IA positions. And so we continuously, continuously need to attract substitute teachers here in Carmel. And then we have some three-hour positions that are available resource, or recess IAs, cafeteria IAs for supervision. So we are looking forward to this event, January fourth from three-thirty to six-thirty PM at Clay Middle School. And thank you in advance to any of you watching who was able to share this information. We've already had it advertised via our own social media. We've had ads in the current on this event. And so we hope to attract another eighty-plus attendees and candidates so they can take care of our students and our staff here at Carmel Clay Schools. So we're excited about that. As you can see, walk-in interviews, apply on the spot, interview on the spot. It's truly a great event, so we hope to see you there. The next piece is very exciting and this focuses primarily on our teachers, but also our teachers and administrators. We are partnering with HSC, Noblesville, Westfield, and Zionsville to host our own northside diversity teacher recruitment fair. Now Carmel Clay Schools is not new to this event. This event has not been going on for the last two years due to COVID. Carmel would participate in the past with our Marion County colleagues. However, after talking with the assistant superintendents and HR leaders and superintendents of these districts, we want to host our own. We want to attract great candidates from different diverse and cultural backgrounds to help educate our kids here in Carmel. And so this aligns very closely with our strategic plan. Creatively recruit, hire, onboard, and retain a diverse and premier staff. And you heard a lot about our guiding principles this evening, and it also aligns very good with our guiding principles, diverse opportunities benefit all students. This is the first time that we're rolling this out tonight from all of the districts that we're partnering with. So this will take place on Thursday, March second, and it will be here at our Education Services Center, right here in Carmel. We're going to host the first one and it is going to be from five PM to seven PM. We're going to work on getting the word out from here on in. We're going to work with our local universities. We're going to work with other local groups, community groups to get the word out. But we're very excited to have this event in our own backyard and to also partner with the districts you see listed. I do want to add that the HBCU College Fair that we partnered with these districts previously during first semester was highly successful, brought in a lot of students, a lot of parents, a lot of community members. And so we're hoping to piggyback on the success of that event and take this to the next level. So we're very excited about this opportunity to recruit and get some great candidates for our principals to interview. And then finally, I could not go a board report without mentioning that we need bus drivers, we need substitute teachers, so I'm going to put that out. We are, we're doing well, we're making gains. However, we would love to get back to those pre-pandemic levels that we used to enjoy. So we're going to work very hard, we're going to work every single day to continue to attract and also retain our outstanding staff members here with Carmel Clay Schools. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Louise?
Yep. Thank you so much for sharing this. I'm really excited about these opportunities to get in more talented staff. Just a couple of questions. So is there a way we could maybe promote these activities or these events via educational groups or organizations that we know this kind of talent are tapped into?
Absolutely. We are kicking off tonight. I shared that with the other districts and then we'll be working as a team. We'll also be working with our Equity and Inclusion Officers to tap into some of the groups that they're familiar with, to spread the word, especially with our diversity teacher recruitment fair. And then we've already been in the process of advertising the Classified Support Staff Job Fair. So yes, yes, and yes.
Okay. Another piece, and this might be for Roger, is I'd love to understand the ability or what our ability is to devote some finances to sign-on bonuses for some of our unclassified staff. Could we investigate that?
Yeah, we, we actually did that for a short time several years ago. I remember one example where, with bus drivers, actually. And one of the issues was, is we began to attract some drivers from some of our neighbors, which didn't make our neighbors particularly happy. And, and one of the things that can happen is if, if we're successful that, then, then the neighbor will do the same thing. And so we start, you know, trading employees back and forth a little bit. But, so we've, we didn't have particular, particularly a good experience with that in the past, but things change, you know? And things are even more difficult now than they were then. So Tom and I certainly can have some more conversation about that.
I'd love to have that conversation. Thank you.
Sure.
Jenny, anything? This is really exciting. I heard something about shopping cart. Is that one of your advertising?
Yes. So we are also taking advantage of the local Kroger over on Range Line and Carmel Drive. And so beginning in January, you are going to see Carmel Clay Schools advertised on the shopping carts at that particular Kroger. So we were able to take some of our budget and kind of shift it a bit and try something new. So we do a lot to advertise, but for those who are shopping during the day, hey, there'll be a QR code on there. Scan that QR code and come help us out, whether that's for three hours, whether that's for a morning bus route or an afternoon bus route. We'd love to have you. And so hopefully we get some traction off of that, but we're always trying new things to continue to bring great employees to Carmel Clay Schools.
As part of that, I'm kind of changing my shtick where I used to say that if you can drive an SUV around a roundabout, you can drive a bus. Now I'm saying that if you can push a shopping cart around Kroger, then you could drive a bus.
On Range Line, because that's even more intense.
Well, yeah. So.
Thank you so much. We will now move on Carmel Parks. Ms. Jackson?
I don't have any new updates from Carmel Parks. My last meeting with them will be tomorrow, but I will circle back if I learn something during that meeting.
Thank you. And we will now move on to our superintendent's report.
All right. Want to thank you guys for the reports tonight. Exciting stuff going on and hopefully we'll be able to, to capture some more talented individuals to join our team and appreciate all that. And also appreciate the, you know, the, the upcoming construction pieces. It's always exciting to, to add on to programming like that. And it's also exciting when we can, we're able to do that without touching the, the tax rate. And as you look at that chart where Mr. McMichael had it all the way out to, you know, twenty-forties, that's where debt is dropping off and then new debt can be added. And so it's, it's really good for taxpayers, I believe, to have a consistent tax rate where you're not always bouncing, you know, into, into, you can really build a budget off of a consistent rate. So a masterful job, as always, with keeping the finances in a place where we can keep our facilities up to, to meeting the needs of the programs, but at the same time, keeping that rate the same. I got a really short report for me, so I'll, I'll, I'll go hard at it here. But we got great news in addition, you know, as we honored Mr. Crakey for his, his induction into that fraternity. Greta Pote at Clay Middle School was named the Bandmaster of the Year. So this, each year Phi Beta Mu selects Indiana Bandmaster of the Year. She won the award. It's voted on by the entire membership of the Indiana chapter. So what really makes it special is that it's actually the peers of, of, of the music and teachers that, that make that, that choice. So congratulations to Greta. We'll bring her in at a future board meeting so we can make a, make, give her some, some love for that, but that's a great honor. Boy, our music department is just having an amazing year and what quality. I'm still just in awe of watching them this year and it's fantastic. Speaking of fantastic, Cole Matisson won the National Cross Country Meet. The Champ Sports Cross Country Championships was just this last Saturday. And he had won the Indiana State Championship earlier this year and, but he had just gotten faster and faster over the last six weeks. And, and so this was in San Diego, California, and he won by eleven seconds over the best in the nation. So now he's an amazing runner, but you know, Dr. Ferris and, and everybody at Carmel High School will tell you, he's an even better person. He is a young man of exceptional character and we just want to join in with his family of being so proud of him and congratulate him on, on a crazy fast five K. And if you're a runner or have any concept of a five K, he won it in fourteen minutes and fifty-six seconds. So that's right down there about four minutes and thirty seconds a mile, maybe faster than that. So, and I'm an ex-cross-country runner and coach and I will tell you that from a, from a former distance runner point of view, Cole is a runner that goes out and gets in front and he just keeps going and just grinds his, his, his competition into the ground because he just sets a ferocious pace and he doesn't back down from it. And, and the national meet, he had picked out a spot going up a hill where if anybody else was around him, he was going to put them away and he did so. So congratulations to Cole. Finally, I wanted to say semester, as semester one comes to a close, I just want to both congratulate and thank our students, our staff, our administrators, our parents, our community. This, when we began this semester, I sensed just an extra enthusiasm that was in the air. People were really excited to get back to school. There was a record set for attendance at like student events at Carmel High School. Homecoming was just, just massively successful. It was just, in all of our schools, there was just all the PTO functions, all the, the after-school activities. It was just a lot of enthusiasm in the air about getting back to school and really getting back to what I would call normal. And, and it just continued each week. And now here we are at the end of the semester and, and when we closed down the semester on Friday, there will only be ninety-three days left when we finish up on Friday, ninety-three days left of the, the school year. And I always count the days, but our CCS family really made the first eighty-seven days count and did a fantastic job and in a big way. And so I just want to congratulate everybody on, on their work and I hope we have a good break and everybody gets rested up and, and ready to go and they get a little quality time with their families and the folks they love. And my bell ringer was thanking Mike and Leila for their service. And if there's ever two board members that really epitomize the together we achieve, they were all about collaboration and working with the team and, and, and their track record and their legacy they're leaving with Carmel Clay Schools is one that I challenge you guys to, to one-up it. So, but yeah, it's pretty, pretty impressive and we really appreciate the, the effort and the time and the, just the, the direction and leadership that they've given us for so many years. And with that, my superintendent's report is over.
Thank you. As we close out the year 2022, I want to say on behalf of the board, thank you to the administration, thank you for all the things that you do, thank you to our principals and other people who are in our school buildings and administration, our teachers, our support staff. Like Mike said, from the minute the bus driver greets that student to the end of the day when they drop them off, there's so many people that are touching their lives for good. We have a couple upcoming meetings. Winter break is December nineteenth to January second. Students return on January fifth and on January ninth, we will reorganize our school board meetings and welcome two new members to our board. So we're looking forward to that. We wish you all a wonderful and safe winter break and I will now take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. See you in 2023. Thank you.